So I could log on.
I wondered about that.
So I'm glad I was successful.
Yeah, I was, I wondered about that, if you were gonna have to call in on phone, so glad to see your face. And there is Ben.
Yeah, so.
So here we go, um, so it is six thirty-one. And so we will, uh, begin, um, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular board session, um, on Monday, May fourth, of the Tiger Twolton School District. Um, I do want to inform everyone, uh, that the board met in executive session, um, under convened under ORS one nine two dot six six zero two I to review and evaluate the performance of the superintendent and any other public officer, employee, or staff member, unless that person requested an open hearing. Uh, we, um, adjourned at, um, six ten, and actually, we went into recess at six ten. And we will reconvene in executive session, um, once the regular board meeting, um, is complete. Um, and with that, um, we will begin, um, our regular session, um. Uh, Dr. Ricky Smith, are there any changes to the agenda?
There are none, Chair.
Um, okay, this evening on consent is the April twenty TTSD, um, Board Work Session Executive Session Meeting Minutes and Human Resources Report Personnel Action. With that, I'll, um, take a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I approve the agenda as presented.
Nice second.
Motion was made by Director Zertzmead and seconded by Director Fox to approve the agenda as presented. And as we have been doing, um, on, uh, our Google Hangout Board Meetings, I will call each board member individually for, um, approval, um, Director Bowman.
Aye.
Director Emerson.
Aye.
Director Fox.
Aye.
Director Zertzmead.
Aye.
And I am aye as well. Motion carries, the agenda is set, and we will move to recognition and good news. Uh, Director Rose and Lisa Burton.
Good evening, Director Wolf and Directors, um, Chair Wolf, sorry, and Directors, I'm gonna start, um, a presentation real quick while I talk about our first, um, group that we will honor this evening. One moment. And I'm hoping that you all can see those pictures. Yes, can I hear? Yes, yes.
Not yet.
Yes, I can see them.
Wonderful. And now, so tonight, I want to share with you, um, that we are honoring our group, Pact with Pride. We are, um, as you will see in the slideshow, um, these folks have been, um, doing, uh, amazing work in our community. Um, on March twelfth, you, um, as you all know, uh, we had an emergency board meeting. And our district closed, which was at the beginning, what we thought would be for one week prior to spring break. And here we are now, almost six weeks later, um, and we are still, um, not in session. And at, uh, the time of the closure, this group came together and recognized that for thousands of our kids, um, they get two of their main meals a day, or possibly only meals a day, at our schools. So they came together, they rallied, um, they started raising money and food. Uh, and since that time, and just recently, as of today, we're able to announce over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars has been raised. And, um, over two thousand boxes of food have been donated to our families across the district. We want to, oh, uh, we want to call attention to these folks tonight because of their work. We have been able to get really, really good at recognizing our families in each of our school communities for, um, those that depend on us. Um, in the school report card for the two thousand eighteen nineteen school year, we had, uh, over four thousand students that were on free and reduced lunch. And we, um, know that that's not all of our students that are reporting. So from this, uh, process and from the leaders that were a part of this process, we were able to work with our individual schools and the folks, our staff that are in, um, working with these students and be able to really identify all of those students and families that need our help. So I'm going to pull back out, sorry, stop presenting, um. One moment, as I switch to my notes, I apologize. So today, we would like to recognize the founders of Pact with Pride, School Board Director Ben Bowman, the Foundation for Tiger Twolton Schools Executive Director Margie Green, School Board Chair Maureen Wolfe, and TTEA President Scott Herring. In addition, these organizations represent the Foundation for Tiger Twolton Schools, TTEA, the Tiger Twolton School Union, Student Union, excuse me, and Tiger Twolton School District and Staff. Now, as Margie Green would call them, there are angels among them, um, volunteers that have gone above and beyond, and we want to make sure that we recognize all of them tonight, and hopefully, they are on this call with us. Um, our students, Matt Brown, Abdi Mohammed, Kavee Sharissa, Caleb Washmuth, and then staff Nicole White, uh, volunteers Sarah Waddell, Lynette Biglow, Ki- Kiara Hill, Lori Berry, Harvey Aritos, Madei Fast, Pam Levitt, excuse me, Tristan Irvin, Katie McKee, Pedro Marquez, and Alma Morales. These folks have done an amazing amount of work. Um, and as we've been able to share in the weekly, um, Pact with Pride information that we send out, there's just, uh, countless hours that have gone in to actually, um, providing food boxes to those that are coming to the Tiger High School location. And then again, on the weekends, when we have folks delivering those meals to our individual families. Um, the group also wanted to make sure that we called out, um, the folks at Tiger High School, the custodial staff, uh, Principal Bailey, all of the folks over at Tiger High School who have basically turned the keys over to this group and let them take over. And we also want to recognize those folks, um, on our staff that have rolled up their sleeves and dug in and helped the group as well. Um, our leader, the leaders, because there's so many people, it's hard to name everyone, but the leaders of the group on our side, um, Xenia An, Mandy Morris, Alfonso Ramirez. Uh, we also want to recognize the, um, Family Resource Center led by Catherine West, Rebecca Katron, and Veronica Collier. And, um, I want to make sure I also said Jessica Swindle at Metzger, who was really one of the first ones to jump in the pool, as usual. So on behalf of the Tiger Twolton School District, we just want to recognize this amazing work and thank everyone for what they're doing. It's only going to make us better. Uh, we talk a lot about, um, the end game, and the big end game is that we get done with this COVID thing altogether. But the end game relative to the work that's being done now is we're gonna know our families better than we ever did. We're going to be able to come back into school and be able to serve them in a way that we haven't been able to before. And then just the last piece that this group has been able to do is bring this community together, like, uh, I don't know if we've ever seen before. Um, but we're just doing things differently, and we're doing them together, and, um, I just, every time I turn around, I'm hearing someone else say Pact with Pride that I've never met before. So, um, on behalf of the district, thank you.
Tracy, thank you. I, um, I'm actually gonna turn it over to Ben and Margie, and then Scott, if you'd like to say anything. But I do want to acknowledge, Tracy, thank you for, um, acknowledging everyone, and Veronica Aguilera was on the list and just, um, missed in, um, as you read, uh, the name.
Oh, I'm so sorry, yes, Veronica. I just sent her the link, Veronica, I'm so sorry.
And, and I, I, I see her smiling face, and she's so joyful, um, addressing the cars that they pull up on, um, when the cars, um, arrive or when families come. But at no further ado, Ben, Margie, um, Scott, please, um, uh, share what you'd like to about, um, this project.
I just want to say really quickly that Margie sent me a text, and, um, believe it or not, she was diverted to go pick up a food donation rather than to be on time for this presentation and be honored in the way that she should. So we'll, um, we'll get her another time unless she pops in before this is over.
Well, I'll just say, then, uh, you know, Margie Green has been an incredible leader for this project, um, and, uh, honestly inspiring to work with. This is the first chance that I really got to dive in with her, and I think, uh, between she and Maureen, they're basically running our own version of a grocery store out of Tiger, Tiger High School's cafeteria. Um, and I think, Tracy, that was a wonderful presentation. I really appreciate you putting that together. I think that the thing that is harder to capture, because we're trying to protect identities and protect people, is the response from parents and the response from guardians who, you know, we've seen people in tears, we've received late night emails expressing gratitude, we've seen desperation from folks who didn't know where else to go, and, um, I just, uh, I, I feel like what, what we've created in this district with the support of all these different stakeholders is so important, and, you know, in a moment where our unemployment rate is like creeping north of twenty percent and like into the Great Depression levels of unemployment, like, the need is so enormous, so for us to have had the support of the district, um, starting with Dr. Sue as our superintendent, to be able to make the shifts that we had to make, so we could be prepared, as we are now, to have a large bank of money and a system worked out to be able to supply food. I, I genuinely think our community is probably better situated than anywhere else to actually provide for the growing need that we're seeing, so. Um, I've been really proud to, to be part of this and really appreciate everybody who's poured their heart and souls into it, so. Scott, anything you wanna, you wanna chime in?
I would say it's a little surreal. It's my high school, um, down on it there. It's my high school cafeteria, so they go in there and, and help with the, what has become probably the biggest food bank in the community, if not Washington County, um, they started from scratch. And we give really primo boxes. Let me tell you, the families are doing good with what we give them right there. I'm jealous sometimes. Um, and I, I think back to the first time that, uh, Maureen and Ben and I went to, uh, Grocery Outlet and filled up two cars, thinking, oh, my God, we can't do this every week, and we had four hundred delivery boxes last week. Uh, what, seven hundred loaves of bread and, uh, onions out our ears. Um, it's just amazing, uh, where it's come from, and I think in many ways, it's incredible community, uh, joint effort that has revealed what was already there in the first place, a lot of hunger in our community, and a lot more that's coming that way, but I think that we're well-suited right now. I don't think that the old cafeteria at Tiger High will ever be the same. Um, you know, minus a few scratches from some tables, and Maureen, you know what I'm talking about. Um, but, you know, um, but where it's grown, and it's given an outlet for our community to be involved. I think we had forty, uh, different, uh, drivers, probably eighty people, everybody came in pairs. I don't think we have one driver showing up for deliveries. Um, and with the first time, uh, we probably gave out, what, a hundred and thirty boxes, a hundred and fifty boxes the first week, and we thought, oh, my God, this was not something sustainable. We did what, eight hundred last week? Who knows what we'll do this week? Um, and so it, it, it shows a lot about the people that were first involved and the people that volunteered in the middle of a crisis and the pandemic, this is how they responded. So my hat off to Margie, Maureen, and Ben, and to all the little angels, as Margie said.
So I think, Margie, are you on? I see a FTSTTS president.
I think that might be Pam.
Okay. Oh, yeah, Pam, um, do you want to say anything on behalf of the foundation?
Am I unmuted?
You are.
Yeah, I, I, I certainly should not speak for Margie. Margie is, is, um, to be honored for all of the countless hours. I, Maureen, you and I have talked about how many hours we go, but Margie's there all the time, and I just want to commend her, so I don't want to speak for her. But just on behalf of the foundation, um, there's some foundation board members on the call that you were thanking, we're trying to do our part. Um, just, you know, thank you to Maureen, and Ben, and Scott, and Margie for, um, your hearts and getting this going in our community. And those of us will do what we can to support all your efforts, but, um, you really are the heart and soul of this, and I, I don't want to take any time other than to just thank you all.
Um, and the only thing that I'll add, um, is just the names that Tracy read off and the countless volunteers that just show up regularly every week, um, but I look at this list, and I want to do a huge shout out for the students lifting boxes, cleaning food, and all those pieces, um, and our food managers who figure out what our menu should be, and just the ones, our loyal volunteers like Lori, and then leading some, you know, fundraising and maybe some competition with our PSOs, um, of really generating towards this. And then Katie McKee, I have to tell the story because the first week that we had, uh, pickup, um, it was a line, and I think all of us just could breathe easier because Katie was on the scene, she was gonna orchestrate a parking lot in perfect, um, design, and she is there every week, um, assisting our families, um, through the drive-through and just so appreciate her smiling face, her, her calmness, and just, I truly appreciate everybody. Um, that's really, um, like Scott and Ben and Pam have said, just really grateful for, um, for everyone, so thank you.
One name that I neglected to send to Tracy that had just popped into my head, uh, Patina McGowan, a super volunteer who every week drives-
Extraordinaire, Ben. Volunteer extraordinary.
Volunteer extraordinary. Every week drives to North Portland and Northeast Portland because we've got students who are living in homeless shelters, um, who are outside the district but are our students. And she has requested every week to say, I want them to see a familiar face every week, someone they know and trust. So every week, she is putting a bunch of miles on her car to hit the farthest-reaching students, um, and it's just been really, really great to work with.
And to add that, when he says North Portland, he's talking about on the very end of St. John's, where you're outside the city limits. And it took her a couple of hours to figure out where she was going to find this person. She goes back every week to get the kid through.
So I think, um, I think from this perspective, yeah, so, um, uh, Superintendent Ricky Smith, if you wanted anything to add, you can, um, close it for us.
Thank you all. Again, all I wish to say here is, again, my profound thanks. Um, I think this is absolutely going to be the, um, a high watermark that other districts will want to be, fall far, far short of achieving in the sense of, um, just the care, the passion, the commitment, um, and the way all the various groups have come together, um, and collaborated, it just, it demonstrates what makes TTSD truly special. Um, and, and the way in which you are impacting families and helping our students have full bellies at night um, ma- makes a huge difference, um, not just in terms of their learning, but most, more importantly, around their social, emotional, and mental health, knowing that they, they can count on you and, and count on these boxes, and so thank you from the depth of my heart, um, and, and certainly, we look forward to continuing to work with you as we continue to navigate, um, uh, COVID nineteen for how ever long that battle is going to be, but you certainly have made it far, far easier a burden because, because of the, of your work, so thank you to each and every one of you.
Well, thank you, and I know, um, uh, we have a lot of our, um, team on the line, and, um, it would be difficult to have you all try to share something, much less, you know, navigate, um, a, a virtual meeting. But if, if any of you want to share something, I want to, um, offer up that opportunity, um, just to hear from one of those that, that's on the line or one of our students, um. So I'll pause. Okay, I know, again, um, to just, uh, kudos to everything that's been said, and to Dr. Sue, and, um, I think we, um, maybe have some mugs that will be delivered at some point, um, when we all finally, um, get to, um, come back together, um, and, um, just thank you. And I think, uh, so with that, um, uh, board members, I guess we'll circle back to our normal process, um, Director Zertzmead, Fox, Emerson, uh, before we move to our next item. Did you have anything that you wanted to, um, share?
I just want to add my thanks to the, to the, to the list because I have been so impressed with you guys, and I tell you, when I'm in a conference call with a state representative or a state senator, and they mention as a point of pride, oh, yeah, there's this Pact of Pride thing, my heart just wants to explode, and I'm so very proud to be a member of this community, and so thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
I, I also just, oh, I just also want to chime in and say thanks too, and, um, thanks just seems so trite, really, because of the huge impact that everybody's having on the community. It's just amazing. Um, and I just want to acknowledge that you guys are, it's not a sprint. I mean, you guys, this is like, what, week seven or something like that? I mean, so it, it's a lot of time, and I, um, I know I've talked with Maureen on several occasions where she's running around trying to do various things associated with that, so. Um, anyway, just bottom of my heart, I really just, I'm, uh, blown away by everybody's, um, care- caringness and concern, um, for our community, and it makes me really proud to be a member of this community, so thank you.
Definitely, thank you. I, I, I do want to say something, because the one other thing, in addition to all the families that you guys are definitely helping, you've also created the opportunity for volunteers to step forward, um, to do something to help when they were kind of, maybe at first were like, I don't know what to do to help, but now they have this to turn to and can count on this and feel for their own social, emotional health, that they know that they're making a difference in helping, so thank you.
Well, thank you all, um, and it's a perfect segue to transition to Teacher Appreciation Week. Um, and I will hand this back to, um, Director Rose, but, um, and you know, Scott and Ben and Margie, I mean, the number of teachers, Karen, to your point, who have just consistently and just regularly stepped up to make this what it is, has been phenomenal. So, um, with that, uh, Director Rose, I'll hand it back to you.
Thank you, Chair Wolf. Um, as you know, uh, it's May fourth, and this is Teacher Appreciation Week. Teacher Appreciation Week is observed annually during the first full week of May, and we are asking everyone this year to join us, as always, to honor our teachers, but this year in particular, um, we have been reaching out far and wide to, um, some special leaders and people in our community to join us and to help us, uh, love up on our teachers. So with that, I, um, there's a couple of pieces to this presentation, so for the first part of the presentation, I'm going to turn it over to Lisa Burton for a special presentation.
Okay, um, so, um, like Tracy said, we've been collecting some very special messages, um, from many people, um, in our community, and of course, from our board members that we'll be sharing throughout the week. But I would like to just start with sharing part of a, a much longer video, um, that, um, just a portion of it with everyone to give you, um, an idea of, of what's to come. So I'm gonna share my screen.
Happy Appreciation Week, Tiger and Twolton staff. Uh, teachers, this year, appreciation has taken on a meaning that none of us could ever imagine. I am certain that there are parents across this entire district that so admire your talent, your craft, your skill, your patience, and all those things that make you such a successful teacher in our classrooms. From the bottom of my heart, I thank you for all of that that you have done every day. And then, given this year, with all the changes in our school and our learning situation with distance learning, you have been there supporting your students all the way, and I thank you so very, very much. And on, um, a final note, there's so many things I'd like to say, but I'll, I'll keep it short. Um, for those of you, so many of you, I see volunteering and working with us at Pact with Pride or connecting with your families to see what supports they need. Um, just thank you so much for everything that you're doing, um, and we appreciate you. Take care. Hello, everyone. Well, this might be the strangest Teacher Appreciation Week you or I have ever seen. The need to let you all know how much we love and appreciate you has never been stronger. So, I brought you flowers, I brought you balloons. Please know that we love you and appreciate you, and we know you're working so darn hard for our kids right now, and I couldn't be prouder of you. Thank you, TTSD teachers.
Hey, everyone, this is Ben Bowman, Tiger Twolton School Board Member. I just wanted to say to all the teachers in the Tiger Twolton School District, thank you so much for everything you do for kids, especially with everything happening right now. I'm incredibly grateful for all the time and energy you put into educating our students. Um, I know that for a lot of you, it's not just teaching the students in your classroom, but it's taking care of your own family during the challenging time that we're going through. And then on top of that, so many teachers in our community are stepping up to volunteer at things like Pact with Pride to deliver food to students, uh, in our community who need extra help and support. So thank you so much, uh, for all you do. Uh, it's Teacher Appreciation Week, and we should be grateful for teachers every day, but right now especially, thank you for everything you're doing. Um, it's really, really appreciated. Thank you.
Hey, teacher, Sharon Fox here, just wanting to thank you for your professionalism and dedication, especially during this difficult and unprecedented time. Thank you for shining through it, for enduring, and for just your adaptability through it. I appreciate all the work you're doing on behalf of our students.
Hey, Karen Emerson from the Tiger Twolton School Board here. I want to say a huge thank you to all of our teachers, and thank you for finding your way through distance learning. I miss seeing you, and I'm looking forward to getting back into our schools. You are appreciated.
All right, uh, thank you for letting me share that with everybody.
Well, Lisa, thank you. I look forward to seeing the whole video, um, and just, uh, like all of us said, it's an important time, just to say thanks, and just unprecedented times, so thank you for putting this together.
Yeah, I want to, um, just another shout out to Lisa, who's been working real hard at this. Um, I got a crazy idea and then just started throwing videos at her, and she was able to put this together, so. Um, this is just a, a preview, um, for this evening, but she's got a whole lot more up her sleeve for the rest of the week, so watch. Um, social media, we'll be pushing out testimonials, we have more coming in from some special friends. Um, and we're just gonna continue to, um, use a very- We have more coming in from some special friends, and we're just going to continue to use various vehicles to let our teachers know how much they are being thought of right now, and how much gratitude has come in their way.
Thank you, Director Rose. And I think then at this point, we will move forward to our resolution. And Vice Chair Fox will be reading the resolution, and then we will vote to approve. So, Director Fox.
So this is Resolution 1920-15, Recognizing Outstanding Contribution of Tiger 12 School District Teachers. Whereas teachers mold future citizens through guidance and education, and whereas teachers encounter students of widely differing backgrounds, and whereas our country's future depends upon providing quality education to all students, and whereas teachers spend countless hours preparing lessons, evaluating progress, counseling and coaching students, and performing community service, and whereas our community recognizes and supports its teachers in educating the children of this community. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Tiger 12 School District Board of Directors proclaims May 4th through 8, 2020 to be Teacher Appreciation Week, and be it further resolved that the Tiger 12 School District Board of Directors strongly encourages all members in our community to join with, and personally expressing appreciation to our teachers for their education and devotion to their work. Adopted this May 4th, 29, or May 4th, 2020.
Thank you, Director Rose. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to accept the resolution.
I move to adopt the resolution as read.
My second. Motion was made and seconded to approve the resolution 1920-15 to honor the outstanding contributions of our Tiger 12 School District teachers as presented. Any further discussion? Okay, Director Bowman.
Hi.
Director Emerson.
Hi.
Director Fox.
Hi.
Director Zertzme.
Hi.
Director Wolf. Aye. And the motion moves and approves unanimously. So, thank you all. Again, it's weird to do it this way, but Scott, thank you for all that you do to support your teachers, and just so appreciate this opportunity to say thank you. And I think with that, we will continue on our agenda and go to student representative reports. So I think I saw Madison and Teddy Creek cited listed first. Serma, are you on the line? I don't think so. No, I am, so Madison, would you like to do Tiger High's report? Is Madison here? I saw her pull it.
Can you guys hear me okay? Hi, sorry, I couldn't find my unmute button.
Oh, no, I, yes, I understand the challenge.
Hi, I am here. So, as we just saw with the video, this week is Teacher Appreciation Week, and we've been, on the Tiger High Instagram, we have been celebrating that. We actually were going to have like Senior Memory Week, but we pushed it back for Teacher Appreciation. So today, the account celebrated it, Teacher Appreciation Week, by asking on the Instagram story, asking students their best like memories with the teachers, and the response all ranges from like, oh, they stayed after school like three days in a row to help me get caught up, or like to listening when I was sad, someone else says that their teacher gave them a donut, just because like they had an extra from like a meeting or something, I don't know. It was just sweet stuff like that. And then there's more to come in that area for Teacher Appreciation. And then today was Tigerd Senior Cap and Gown Pickup, which was really cool. We had it, so it was set up like, last name A through G came at nine to 10, H through whatever came from 10 to 11 and so on. So that was really, it went really well, it was really well organized. I was in there in and out in like five minutes. It was really sweet, there were like staff members dancing around with pom poms with music playing. I'm pretty sure he had a mask on, but I think I saw Mr. Bailey dance to my car and hand me a 2020 grad sign. That was really fun. It was really cool, so yeah.
Thank you, Madison. And I dropped off some stuff at the cafeteria today and saw kind of the last group go through, and it really, it gives you that sense of perspective on something that can be celebrated in a moment when things look so different. So it was really fun to see how that happened today at Tigerd High. And so thank you, and Teddy, I think you're on the line as well, and you can go next.
All right, well, similarly to Tigerd, we, us 12th and 12th high school students, we're celebrating Teacher Appreciation Week. We're getting little videos from multiple students just saying their favorite teacher memory, or just favorite thing about an important teacher, and then we're going to put all those together and post that on Instagram or send it out to teachers, which will hopefully, hopefully be impactful. And then as well, we also had our cap and gown pickup today, which also went well. We were able to turn in some books for that and get our caps and gowns, which is exciting. I would say there is definitely some concern with students. There's been a lot of talk that the graduation will be moving entirely to virtual, and we'll be going with kind of a virtual option, but the news that Beaverton School District will be, is planning to do in-person graduations early August, with talk of still trying to do social distancing, possibly doing six feet apart chairs. I know there's four high schools for that that are planning to do that, so I know there's a lot of students that are a little upset if that would be the thing. And there's been talk and reaching out to ASB just saying, what is it going to be entirely virtual? If they're doing that, why can't we do that? So I would say that, that is definitely a concern for seniors, especially with the cap and gown pickup. But yeah.
Right, and Teddy, I appreciate the comments, and I think it's a great segue into superintendent board communication. And so from that, Dr. Ricky Smith, I don't know if you were going to address some of that in your superintendent comments, but I will hand it over to you as we move to our next agenda item.
Thank you so much, Chair. And again, I want to also start with, first and foremost, my deepest appreciation for all of our teachers this week, not just this week, but throughout the year, and certainly in light of all of the expertise and leadership and heavy lifting that they've brought to distance learning. Again, another high watermark for this district, and it truly exemplifies who we are and what we believe. I also want to give a shout out to our IT and our food service staff as well, and relative to the heavy lifting that they've been doing in making certain one, that also our children are fed along with Pack with Pride, and that families have hotspots and a go-to place relative to help guests in helping them connect to the outstanding work that our teachers are doing. So what an awesome team of superheroes this week to celebrate teachers, IT and food service staff, just to name a few. Relative to the graduation celebrations, yes, I'm pleased to hear about the, and knew about the pickup today of cap gowns and honor cords. And certainly, if you are a Coin Six News watcher, you can check out the evening news again tonight, and they've got a lovely piece relative to Tigerd's mini celebration today. And it's one of several that we will be having over the next several months. I understand and respect that there is growing student and parent anxiety about a final culminating event. And so I want to share some additional information regarding that. First, I want to start with the district's guiding principles for our response to the governor's executive orders over the past two months. The needs of all of our students are certainly at the heart of all discussions and decisions. As equity is a foundational value for us, before any final decision is made around graduation, they're vetted through that lens. That means taking into account concerns that involve students who need to be or are currently employed to support their families, students who do not have a car or easily accessible transportation, students who may need to start summer college classes, to name but a few issues the team is trying to work through. It's also important to recognize that over the past few weeks, our high school administrators, who are developing along with teachers this plan, have also been simultaneously developing distance learning instruction for all students, while monitoring, ensuring all high school students, seniors, are fully supported towards graduation. Any one of these issues is monumental in scope and scale on their own. And while our team is an amazing collection of skilled administrators, educators, and support staff, I appreciate our community's understanding and brace as their capacity is being stretched in ways that larger district teams, who have already communicated, may not have been. Information relative to the auctions being considered for the class of 2020 will be out by the end of this week, so please be looking for that. As a point of clarity, the high school team has been working in close proximity with our surrounding districts, including Beaverton, Lake Oswego, and Westland-Wilsonville, and has considered their approaches in conjunction with our own student, parent, and staff feedback. Additionally, I am working closely with these same superintendents and have weekly conversations to ensure we are aligned in our planning that celebrates our amazing students while complying with the governor's social distancing orders. Collectively as superintendents, we are deeply concerned that solid and hard commitments to holding a traditional graduation exercise, especially one that is delayed into the summer, may not be possible to hold, and therefore cause further grief and disappointment in an already challenging set of circumstances for our students. This is especially true for our historically underserved students, who may be the first to graduate in their family. For this reason, all of these districts are working on virtual concepts as well, to ensure that there is an alternative celebration should a district decide to delay the graduation date. Beaverton is a prime example. They communicated, and I have confirmed this with Superintendent Don Broding, that they have set a hard date of July 10th to make a final determination as to whether their celebration will be traditional or virtual. Westland-Wilsonville will not be delaying their date, and they have communicated to their community that June 2nd, 3rd, and 4th will be used for some form of virtual celebration yet in the planning. Lake Oswego Superintendent has shared with me that it is split by high school, Lakewood engaging in a drive-by diploma pickup, and Lake Oswego delaying into late summer. She has made it clear to Lake Oswego High School, however, that if social distancing guidance does not allow a traditional, that they will go forward with a virtual celebration. TTSD is fortunate to have a team of committed, skilled, and caring educators who are considering all of these options in their final draft. The team is dedicated to responsibly weighing all the options and challenges and determining the best approach for honoring this amazing and amazingly resilient class of students. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Ricky Smith. I know, it just seems, it is the season, it's been the year, just, yes. With that, I will move to my fellow board members. Just attempt to stay orderly, I will continue in my alphabetical order. Director Bowman, is there anything you'd like to add today?
No real updates, other than doubling down on our gratitude for teachers this week. Appreciate them for everything you do.
Director Emerson.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Director Fox.
I have nothing to share tonight.
Director Zertzme.
You know, I've been trying really hard to come up with something, but when you're sitting at home 24 hours a day, it's really hard to come up with anything. You know, some Zoom meeting, missed my teachers terribly. I had a text conversation with one of my favorite teachers this week, and I realize how very, very much I miss that contact with our teachers. But yeah, other than that, I'm just watching the world go by.
No, I agree with all of you and feel I'm a little bit fortunate to connect with some of our teachers through Pack with Pride, but I think about just all the activities and opportunities that were lined up, for me anyway, to, you know, visit classrooms, see my schools, right, as we all think about our schools and all of that, you know, until next year. But yeah, I have really nothing to add as well, except just so grateful for our amazing staff, all the way around. So I think with that, then we will move to our next agenda item, which is public comment. And I believe we have two public comments this evening, and Director Emerson and Director Zertzme have continued to offer their services in reading our public comments. And I will say, I'm just looking at my agenda notes, public comments will be read by the board during the public meeting, as I shared. That will be done by Director Emerson and Director Zertzme. Public comments or statements are limited to three minutes, as they always are during our regular board meetings. So I will leave, I will not go mute this time. I will be, for those that can see my phone, be setting my timer for three minutes. And then if the comments extend beyond three minutes, I will have the respective director close at that time. And speakers may offer objective criticism of district operations or programs, but the board will not hear complaints concerning specific district personnel. So with that, I believe we have two, and Director Emerson, I will start with you, followed by Director Zertzme.
Is that how you want to do it, Jill?
Then you guys do it as you.
I'm not sure we actually decided who was reading, reading which one. Did we, did we get to that point, Karen?
I thought you had volunteered for the first one, but I have it right here, so I'll just read it.
No, I've got it, I just, I wasn't sure. Okay, so, Dear Tiger 12 School Board, this is from Trevor Smith. My name is Trevor Smith, and I am the senior class president at Tigerd High School. I am writing to request that the graduation ceremony planning committee please consider an in-person graduation ceremony for Tigerd High School as opposed to a virtual ceremony. Other schools in our area, specifically Beaverton, have published a document for in-person ceremonies with summer dates listed, locations, and contingency plans in case plans change. It is signed by all the principals in the Beaverton School District. It indicates that a final decision will be made on or around June 10th. Speaking on behalf of all the seniors at Tigerd High School, and I can only assume their parents as well, we are asking that the top priority is to have an in-person ceremony later this summer. If, due to Governor Brown's direction that social distancing guidelines would prevent that, then we can go to Plan B and oversee. As of now, we are not getting any communication regarding plans, except hearing rumors that a virtual ceremony is on the horizon. We have worked so hard for 12-plus years, and we deserve to be listened to and heard. I would be happy to work with any committee, as well as to plan, organize, and implement an in-person ceremony. Thank you for your time, best regards, Trevor Smith.
Great, thank you, Director Zertzme. With time to spare, that was a minute 10, I think. So I will reset. Director Emerson, are you ready? I think so. Okay. Okay, I have started.
Okay, this is from Michael Vidnarek, who is a community member. His first comment is about Hobson's Navions contract. You have got to be kidding me, the district has how many various educational specialists on staff that are costing us upwards of $150,000 each in salary and benefits, and you can't figure out how to get children to graduate and find a realistic career path? You want to waste another $170,000 so someone can tell all of you how you are failing at the job you were hired for, and tell you how to get it done? That's like having licensed electricians and plumbers on staff, but then we need to hire someone else to see if they really, really know how to do what they were hired for. Wasn't one of the reasons we hired the superintendent for her skills in this area? I think she is doing a good job moving away from the liberal industrial education machines mission to send every child into college and into a mountain of student loan debt by looking at career paths first. There are many careers that will earn you a comfortable way of life without going to college and are much better than a plaque on the wall and a job pouring beer at McMiniman's or making lattes at Starbucks and $75,000 in student loans that you want me to pay for. I know you gave a job of overseeing $300 million bond project to a person with no commercial building or financial training or experience. I know you gave the job of overseeing $300 million bond project to a person with no commercial building or financial training or experience.
Thank you, Chair. I don't know where we are with time, but I, but I am a bit concerned relative to the directness of these comments, so.
Yeah, so Director Emerson, we have a minute left, so if there are other comments that aren't specific to a district personnel as described. In the public comment criteria, you may continue. Otherwise. I think I can go to the next session. That was my hesitancy at the beginning was trying to find what I could read, so I'm sorry. We obviously need more scientists and engineers, but we don't need any more liberal arts majors. No, we're just, we're getting into. The fact as you read through all of the details of Hobson's contract, there is voluminous information on how they are trying to thwart the intention of FERPA. Will we be doing the district mandated background checks on all of the Hobson employees that are giving. That are given unfettered access to minor children's private information? Director Emerson, thank you for sharing that public comment and that was the three-minute timer. And so we will, I believe that is the only two public comments that we had. Thank you, Dr. Ricky Smith. And so we will close public comment. And we will move to reports and discussions and Director Rose.
Thank you. We are here to talk about the 2021 school year calendar proposal. We sent out two options, option A and option B, which was included in your board packet. I will go over the summary, but also wanted to let you know, as I state here, that we had originally planned. To go into a, to propose a two-year calendar. But unfortunately, in the situation that we're in right now and the surrounding COVID-19 impacts. We felt safe in trying late in the year for getting the calendar in front of you. So we're hoping that we can come to an agreement on what is proposed. We put out a survey to all district staff proposing two options. And really, the two calendars are pretty similar. Some of the things that we were looking at this year is making sure that the quarters were somewhat even. And also looking at identifying when, when is the best time for conferences? And then also taking a stronger look at training slash professional slash workdays. So putting out a survey for about a week for district staff feedback. We had 519 overall responses. Of the two options presented, we had 36% that selected option A, 64% that selected option B. 387 responses represented our licensed staff. 103 represented our classified staff and 71 represented our hourly slash confidential slash non-contract staff. A summary of the options, the common assumptions for the calendar are that. August 25th through the 27th being new teacher training, August 31st through September 3rd, all staff pre-service. Starting school for grades one through five, six and nine on Tuesday, September 8th, following Labor Day. September 9th, the first day of school for grades seven, eight, 10 and 12. And then the following Monday would be the first day for kindergarten. Thanksgiving holiday break would be no contact, no contact days on Wednesday and Friday with the Thanksgiving holiday break on Thursday. Holiday winter break, December 22nd through January 1st. March, spring break is the 22nd through the 26th, June 18th is the last day of school. And June 21st being the last day for staff. Also, the general assumptions for both are one classified and service day. Three K through 12 professional development slash training days. Three end of quarter workdays, one K through 12 conference day. Two additional K through eight conference days with on those days, one is a high school professional development day and one is a. One day, high schools in session. Both options presented are a total of 172 days instructional days. Both options include emergency closure plan for extended days. And I'll note that Labor Day is late this year, so that is why we go till that third week in June. The slight differences between the two options is option A brings fall conferences earlier. And the staff professional development day later. And option B is actually bumping conferences later in October with an earlier staff professional development day. And you can see that the quarters. Quarter one in option A is 43 days, quarter two is 44. Quarter three is 43, quarter four is 42, whereas in option B. Quarter one is 43, quarter two is 44, quarter three is 42 and quarter four is 43. I collected some feedback and put them into themes for you to take a look at. And divided them up by those. That provided feedback relative to starting late this year or starting earlier. Conferences, whether or not they wanted conferences earlier, earlier. And you can see the responses on both sides. The start and end of the school year, Thanksgiving week, closures in general, and then just some other general comments. So the, the option that was selected was option B.
Board members, any questions for Director Rose?
Couple. So I'm curious to the logic behind creating two schedules that were so similar to begin with and not giving teachers. More and staff more variety of choices to choose from.
Well, part of the reason, last year we took a, we took a little bit of a gamble and we had that conversation around Thanksgiving week. Whether or not to have conferences and training days, the first two days of that week and then just having that whole week being off for students. The other piece of it was trying to find. A way to make sure that the quarters were even. And then there are a couple of conference days. There wasn't a lot of juggling that we were able to do. This is my first solo ride in putting the calendar together for the first time. And I have been really fascinated. I still have the feedback from last year. I got a lot of feedback prior to actually sending the calendars out. And what I hope to do is next year or plan to do next year is to dig a little bit deeper into the feedback that we're getting. What I'd like to see is actually, what are some of those themes that we're looking at relative to as you. I'm sure you've gone through all of the comments relative to starting before Labor Day. And how far we do go into June? Do we continue to strive to have more than 172 instructional days? And then what is the right timing for conferences? If you look at the feedback we're getting. A lot do want them later, but if you take away those that really were happy with that Thanksgiving week. Is it almost a draw between having them earlier and having, pushing them back to the end of the quarter? So there was, I, I kind of looked at two years ago when, at that calendar here to see what. And the only other piece that we had was whether or not we would have, we would come back from spring break with a training day. And I have heard since I got back that there was some interest in actually pushing that away from spring break. To make sure that we were able to have better attendance.
Thank you. I am also curious, because if ever there were a time to start school early, it seems like this year might be the year to do it. It buys us a little time if we do need to have a closure at some point in the year, if there's a second surge. I'm just sort of wondering what the interest level on that is, either from my fellow board members, from the district. I don't mean to say, you know, come back and get us a new calendar, but I am curious about the efficacy of that.
Well, I think you saw on the feedback that there were several folks that were asking why we weren't starting before Labor Day. I, what I'd be curious to find out is, and, and. I'd be curious to see if starting before Labor Day would extend the year so we could get more instructional days? Or if folks were hoping to extend it before Labor Day and end earlier in June? Those are the kind of questions I wanted to dig into and then also, you know, deferring to all of you on. Since I've got here, I've heard that, you know, we are, 172 is somewhat low. So 174, 176 maybe. I showed you the comps from other districts. Everybody's around 174, 175. I think one other of our neighbors is at 173. So I did hear and talked to Dr. Sue about, I did hear, I don't know if it's necessarily in Oregon, but there have been some conversations around. Districts taking a look at a model where you're starting in early or mid-August and taking a longer winter break. But I think that that's more of a, they're thinking that's when we might see a resurgence of COVID. But if, but that's a gamble, right? We don't have a crystal ball, so we don't know for sure what that's going to look like. The other interesting comment I, I thought was very provocative was the comment about now that we know that we can get really good at distance learning. Why would we ever have another snow day?
Yeah, that is interesting. I, I was sad actually to see that, yeah, only Portland Public has 172 days like us. I know that is a contractual thing and the board has expressed an interest in the past when we've been in bargaining with our. With our unions to perhaps extend that time that we haven't gotten there. Kind of doubt next year we're going to get there if the money's going to be as bad as I think it's going to be. But I'm just, I'm looking to my fellow board members, what's your feeling about maybe starting a little earlier with the assumption that maybe. We finish the year earlier, maybe we have a little more breathing room for whether it's snow days or if we're going to start following COVID days or COVID weeks, I guess.
So Jill, I had, I had a similar thought when I was reading that the schedule is start earlier so that we do have more flexibility. Interestingly enough, I was talking to my cousin from San, she works in a school district in San Diego. She's a teacher. And she was talking, she was saying their district is thinking about starting in July because of COVID. And not a popular, I'm sure not a popular decision, but they're really thinking scenarios in terms of the different options. If COVID was supposed to come back, so. I thought that was interesting and it might be worth something. I was thinking if we do something similar with, you know, like we're doing with budget where we have scenarios. You know, have this calendar if everything's proceeding as normal. If not, maybe we consider some other options, say if we're still in lockdown, you know, by July. Maybe we, you know, do something earlier. So, but yeah, that was my thought too, is why are we starting so late with COVID? Maybe coming back in, you know, December. So. The other thing, their observation I, I thought was interesting when I was reading through comments is. Some teachers viewed the conference as a planning, a family connecting and planning session. Others viewed it as a feedback session and, and kind of a check-in about how they're doing and feedback so they can improve their. I just thought it was interesting that you have very different perspectives over what the, what the purpose of the sessions are. Observation.
Director Bowman?
Yeah, I'm, I'm definitely. Sorry, is there an echo? Sorry.
Sorry, Dan, I'm still on mic.
No worries. I'm definitely open to starting earlier. I think it's, I think it's a smart move, given the unpredictability that we're dealing with. And I hate saying that, but I do think it would be a wise move for us to, to consider and work with, work with stakeholders on.
So Chair, is there interest on the board's part for us to potentially work up? Some option, another option relative to traditional, if we're brick and mortar and everybody comes in and we're all good. It's calendar X to your point, Director Fox. But in the event that it is, and I've shared this with you on a number of occasions. Where we have to think differently about the school year as well as how we enter into brick and mortar depending on where the governor, governor's guidance is. And have that as, as another set of options that we push out to, to teachers and staff and. Work with our associations to work through, you know, an alternative schedule to address COVID. As well as to address staff workload that comes with that, so. If there's interest with that, we can certainly go back to the drawing board and provide another option.
Yeah, everyone chimed in except Director Emerson. So Karen, you can even give a nod if you agree. I, I just think that to just move forward like nothing's changed and this calendar is going to fit our current situation seems. Not the best plan in our part. So I think it's a great opportunity to go back, work with Scott and his team with the union, teacher feedback, staff feedback. And maybe, yeah, bring that back. Director Emerson, did you want to add anything?
No, I think that makes a lot of sense. And I also noticed the same thing that Director Fox noticed on the conferences. And wondered if there was a difference between elementary and high school and what the mission of those days really is. And maybe if it had more definition for everybody, then maybe the view would be different on having it earlier versus later.
We can certainly, my first thought, and I mean literally it is first thought off the cuff, is to go back to our distance learning teams with our teachers and others who are. In the trenches and have already provided the, or feedback about how they are experiencing that. And have, have them give us some guidance as to what that alternative schedule might be.
Good thumbs up by board members. Agreed? Very good. Okay. Thank you, Director Rose and Superintendent Ricky Smith, and we'll look forward to maybe another round. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Tracy. I appreciate it a lot. I know that's extra work on you, but thank you.
Okay, yes, agreed. Thank you, Tracy. And that closes report and discussions this evening and we'll move to action items, part two. And the first one on the agenda, Director Moore, and that is presenting Creekside Community Summer School Fees.
Thank you, Chair Wolf. Good evening, Chair Wolf and members of the board. We have a proposal in front of you to consider the summer school fees for Creekside Mini High School for the summer. And the program, of course, will be offered differently this year. It won't be in person, but will be remote for both the staff and students. And the action item we're asking the board to consider tonight is to approve the fee that students would pay. To access the program. And this will be for credit recovery with a full fee of $90 and need-based scholarship fee level of $35. We did have a question from Director Emerson about. With the, the possibility that, that students would have a, a pass or incomplete. Status through, as, as late as August 31st for the second quarter. And we're offering this program on a credit recovery basis. How does that impact the staffing levels? And the, the needs that we have for students that may not be consistent with a year ago. Where we have basically the same number of hours determined on a preliminary basis to help with the fees analysis. So I reached out to Director Fields and Director Ebert to, to talk about this question. And we are in agreement that if there is, if there are less students entering the program, then it would cut back on the staff. then it would cut back on the staffing needs. And, um, but I don't think, I think we're also in agreement that it doesn't impact the fee, uh, individual fee level that we're proposing as part of the action request. Any questions besides what Director Emerson posed or any follow-up to that question or anything else?
No. My only comment is I think about students' need. I mean, what, as a mentor, I think about still juniors who are pursuing college that have a due or something still in their, um, um, their transcript. Where I, I, I still think there will still be, um, a number of students maybe looking for credit recovery if that's the first semester. And, and I know everything is a little bit different now that, uh, but I'm, I'm certain that COVID will impact, you know, those that have been impacted by this last term, but I guess we'll find out at the end of the day. We'll see what the demand is. But board members, any questions for Director Moore?
So my only concern is that I worry that we're going to have more students needing credit recovery because of COVID. And it feels a little wrong to be charging tuition in a case where it's really more of an extension of their standard public school experience because of circumstances beyond their control. And I don't know quite how to reconcile that because we have always charged a tuition in the past. Uh, and so certainly, you know, it's precedent and it is for students who weren't able to complete during the standard school year. But I, I do worry, I always worry about the, the appearance that we are charging for a public education.
Thank you, Director Zertzmead. An, uh, an interesting point, and I appreciate you saying that on the, um, the opposite effect, right? Not assuming that students will pass, but they'll actually have not completed it, and what would that look like? Um, additional thoughts from other board members?
It was my understanding that our current students have until August thirty-first to get a passing grade without needing to do summer school program, which is why I thought we might have fewer people enrolling, that they would only need to be, um, recovering first semester class.
I hadn't thought of that.
Yeah, I, I as well. So thank you, Director Emerson, for the reminder of the revised timeline. So I agree. I've forgotten about that. A good point. Um, okay, if there's no other questions from board members or, um, uh, to Director Moore, then I will, uh, look for a motion to approve.
I move that the Creekside Community High School twenty-twenty summer school fees be approved as presented.
I second. Motion was made and seconded to approve Creekside Community High School fee as presented. Any further discussion? Right? Um, board members signify by saying aye. Director Bowman?
Aye.
Director Emerson?
Aye.
Director Fox?
Aye.
Director Zertzmead?
Aye.
Director Wolf, aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Director Moore. And I believe that, if I scroll down, you continue with, um, Naviance agreement.
Yes, so, um, the Naviance agreement with Hobson's Inc. is proposed for approval. And this is a three-year agreement. And, um, the three-year option does provide a significant savings for the district. Um, I did share, um, a concern or two about staff, uh, entering into a three-year agreement in the event that, um, the lay of the land shifts related to this curriculum. And right now it's approved or one of the recommended curriculums, I think, uh, through the, the High School Success Program, through the ODE, if I'm stating that correctly, related to, uh, post-secondary, um, planning and development. And, um, so as I was adding to this, to the board packet, I went ahead and, um, sent off the, uh, you, you may not have noticed, but on the, the quote, at the end of the quote, there was links, a live link to their, uh, terms and conditions. Cause I wanted to make sure in the event, you know, whether there were circumstances out of our control that we could get out of a three-year agreement, if we were midway and for some unknown reason at this point, we could get out of the agreement. The termination language is pretty one-sided. So as I was putting this, um, in the packet, I also sent it off to our attorney and he came back with several comments and, um, concerns. Um, of course, he always lays them all out and then makes the recommendations of which ones to really pay attention to. Um, one being the, the termination clause. There's pretty much a one-way termination clause on, on the behalf of Hobson's on the agreement. So, um, that's one item. And then the second item is, um, there's a, an indemnification clause that's pretty much one-sided. And, um, so at a minimum, he recommended addressing those with Hobson's. And so my recommendation with the, um, action is to add, in addition to approving the three-year agreement, um, maybe adding at the end, subject to negotiation, um, by the superintendent or designee of terms and conditions. Otherwise, we could wait and pay, uh, enter into a one-year agreement. Um, but we'd be paying, um, I think about twelve thousand dollars more per year. So instead of fifty-four thousand plus, it'll be sixty-six thousand plus. But even with that, even with that, we would want to, um, negotiate some of the terms to more in our favor.
So David, just follows it because my understanding is that kids still have, the students still have to create a post-secondary plan, um, whether it be college or career or what have you. And so I was, guess I was assuming students would still need to use, um, that tool. Cause it, you know, having been a, a mentor at Tiger High School, um, you know, it's, I know that's kind of the, the main tool that everybody uses. Um, and be very great, um, remotely as well. So I was just wondering what that feedback that we may not use it, is that coming from, is that, um, coming from somebody or?
No, I didn't say we wouldn't use it.
Okay.
I said that we need to make sure the terms are more, um, not so one-sided in the vendor's favor. And, um, I want the ability to negotiate some of those terms, otherwise, um, especially going into a three-year agreement where that's a long time. It's something that happened that would maybe time for us to go a different direction if, if necessary, out of our control.
Gotcha. Okay. That's helpful. So David, refresh my memory because I know that Naviance, I mean, I'm kind of in the same boat as Director Fox as a mentor. And every year I think, um, Naviance gets more integrated as a tool for students to really, you know, research, track their colleges, apply, um, transcripts get issued through it. So it really becomes an integral tool. But what I'm curious about is Naviance has been in place for a while. We added the middle schools two years ago, is that? And then it became more centralized and those have been annual contracts. So this is a whole new contract with a three-year term? Is that kind of the concern?
No, the, the last one was a three-year term also.
Okay.
And, but before I make the commitment to sign an agreement for a new three-year term, we, maybe there's a different tool out there, just like it seems like every other year, we're using a product and the director comes and says, we want to use this product or this tool, cause it's better. Three years is a long time to enter into an agreement without any way of getting out of it. There's no way that's getting out of this without paying the full hundred and sixty-four thousand if we decide to do something different after a year.
Okay. Now, I.
That's with distance line and COVID nineteen, I, who knows what, you know, the requirements could change from the, the state level. And, um, I'm just playing the devil's advocate here.
Well, um, you do that very well, and that's why you're such a great steward of our resources. Um, and so I have no issue with the modified, um, uh, motion. Um, that does not say that we're not moving forward, but it gives flexibility to Dr. Ricky Smith and Director Moore to, um, negotiate terms that are, um, more fair across, uh, both parties. Uh, fellow board members, any additional questions, comments?
The only other comment I have is, um, I was, um, there is a, I can't, let me look at the document, um, if I still have it up. There was a section on, um, tracking alumni, whether it was alumni tracker. And I have to say, I was a little bit, um, I was kind of like, ooh, what, you know, kind of the whole privacy thing. Um, uh, I don't know how they do that, but, um, I'm assuming I didn't check the terms and conditions, Director Moore, to see if, you know, our students are protected long-term with their, with their data and whether they know what's actually being given to a third party. But, um, that would be something perhaps, um, that I would like to be reassured about.
Actually, what, because, um, after the, uh, the person who made public comment this evening on that contract, uh, called me this afternoon. And so I went back and I actually read, uh, the contract, which is not the agreement in our board packet, but the link to the contract. And the patrons' concerns regarding the contract and FERPA in particular seem to stem from misunderstanding of what being an agent of the district, um, really meant. And so my understanding of what this contract does is it allows Naviance to act as an agent of the district when using FERPA-sensitive data, which means that they are bound by the same law, FERPA, as we would be. So it's just like they are our agent working on this data. So they can't sell our student data to another entity. They can't use that data for any purpose. They are still restricted by the exact same FERPA law that any member of the school district would be.
Thank you, Director Zertzmead. Um, I was just curious, did you see anything about how they track, how they, how they track, um, alumni? Cause they must get that information from the colleges, which is interesting. I mean, it's great for us, right? I mean.
It's actually something we've talked about wanting to do. We want to know what do our students do?
Absolutely.
After they leave us, do they go to college? Do they graduate from college? So, yeah. In that regard, it is useful information. But again, I think it is only something that they could, um, funnel back to us. They couldn't sell it off to a third party.
Right.
And Director Fox, that's, um, that tracking is through the, the National Clearing, Student Clearing House, which I know, um, we access to, our data team does. Um, to use that as a tool to, to provide information to for tracking data at the national level.
Okay, thank you all. Oh, Karen, go ahead.
I move to approve a three-year agreement with Hobson's Inc. for the Naviance platform, subject to negotiations by the superintendent or designee on the terms of service.
A second. A motion was made and seconded, um, to, um, approve the three-year agreement subject to, um, negotiations. Um, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Director Roman?
Aye.
Director Emerson?
Aye.
Director Fox?
Aye.
Director Zertzmead?
Aye.
And Director Wolf is an aye. Motion carries. And with that, um, that is, um, the end of our regular board meeting. I want to thank you all, um, for attending this evening, uh, virtually. And a reminder to our, um, to my fellow board members, we will reconvene in executive session, um, under ORS one-nine-two dot six-six-zero-two-I. It is now seven fifty-six, so let's take fifteen minutes. Um, Patty has, um, set up the Google Hangout for us, um, and so you should all receive that. If not, please contact Patty directly. And, um, thank you all and have a good evening.